Hello and welcome to the July 20th, 2021 special meeting of the Cupertino City Council, immediately before our regularly scheduled meeting of July. And that will start at 6:45, it is now 5:30. This is a special meeting to go over an item related to Blackberry Farm Golf Course. And so, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie? Vice Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And it is my singular honor to be able to welcome our interim city manager, Greg Larson, into our meeting for his first formal meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Welcome, Greg. Did you want to say a few brief words? I'll, you know, provide that allowance. I know it's a little bit out of order, but if you wanted to say a few brief words, please.
Well, thank you to the mayor and council for bringing me to the city. It's been a whirlwind of a week with the city as your interim city manager. And I was fortunate to have the couple of weeks ramp up before your prior city manager left. And this is a very busy city committed to doing great for the residents of Cupertino. So, thank you for this opportunity to serve.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Greg. All right, so we're on to our special meeting item. This is a study session. It's consideration of the Blackberry Farm Golf Course feasibility study options. And those include options for minimal repairs, a renovated golf course, and returning the golf course to natural habitat. And we're also being asked in the study session to provide direction to that. And I'll note, it's 5:32, and Councilmember Willie has joined us as well. So, Greg, would you like to introduce the staff member that will be presenting the item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an issue that has been to council several times before over the years. And our staff, the lead presenter on this, will be Ms. Joanne McGreeney, the Director of Parks and Recreation. Joanne?
Thank you. My screen share here. Can everybody see that?
Yes, again.
Okay, great. So, good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. My name is Joanne McGreeney, and I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. I'll be presenting the item tonight on the Blackberry Farm Golf Course Feasibility Study Options. We are here tonight to ask council to direct staff to update the study for minimal repairs to the golf course, which we will refer to as Option 1, and to study returning the golf course to natural habitat, which we will refer to as Option 3, and to approve budget modification number 2122-148 to appropriate $26,400 for these studies. As a point of clarification, the action tonight is to choose what to study, not to make a decision on keeping the golf course or returning it to natural habitat. The agenda for this item includes the background, feasibility study options, an overview of the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan, the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission, next steps, sustainability and fiscal impacts, and wrapping up with the recommended action. The Blackberry Farm Golf Course was constructed in 1962 and was privately owned until 1991, when the city purchased the property. The existing irrigation is from the course's original installation and has outlived its intended life cycle by over 30 years. Deferring repairs to the irrigation system has led to inefficient use of maintenance resources. The golf course is in a floodplain and is home to very sensitive habitats and protected wildlife species. Any concepts pursued at this site should consider the potential impacts of flooding as well as regulations required to protect existing wildlife. While golf has been identified as a suitable activity for the corridor, other recreational activities such as additional sports fields have not to limit the impact on existing habitats and species. In 2014, the city council funded a new master plan for the Stevens Creek Corridor as a capital improvement project. The golf course was reviewed as part of this plan, and council was presented with a feasibility study prepared by National Golf Foundation Consulting. Council continued the discussion of the feasibility study in 2015, where two council members supported a par three course, two favored fixing the irrigation, and one supported converting it to natural habitat. A feasibility study for a draft preferred alternative was presented to council in 2016, which included a larger renovation of the golf course. City council chose not to take any action at that time, and the Stevens Creek Corridor Master Plan was put on hold until the completion of the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. The Parks and Recreation System Master Plan was completed and adopted by council in February of 2020. The current fiscal year 2122 City Work Program includes an item to identify options for short and long-term improvements for the golf course. Staff have compiled feedback from the community through the efforts conducted for the Stevens Creek Corridor Master Plan, public comment during council and commission meetings, and through the execution of the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. Survey responses from the community in regard to the Stevens Creek Corridor Master Plan alternatives, including uses for the golf course, were presented at the December 16th, 2014 city council study session. The survey indicated that 50% of the responders were in favor of repairing and enhancing the existing golf course. An attachment C is the Cupertino Park and Rec System Master Plan Citywide Survey from 2017 for Activity Participation. The two most highly rated activities for the 700 residents that completed it were walking for pleasure or fitness and nature walks and hikes, coming in at 67%. Golf was rated at 16.8%. Staff is seeking direction on feasibility option or options to pursue for the golf course. Option 1 would update the feasibility study to provide minimal repairs to the golf course. This would address replacing and improving netting, tee boxes, greens in their surrounding areas, and would replace the ponds with a low land native area. All options require addressing the inefficient irrigation system, which wastes water, requires constant maintenance, and poses a potential hazard to the area's protected wildlife species in case of a water main break. Option 2 would update the feasibility study for renovating the golf course to a layout similar to the 2016 Preferred Alternative included as Attachment B. This would include a major renovation of the golf course and the addition of the elements listed, these elements listed. This item was not recommended to be pursued based on the June 3rd Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. At that meeting, a total of 91 community members provided comment through oral and written communications. Of the 91, 80 were in favor of maintaining the golf course as is, and 11 were in favor of returning it to natural habitat. Option 3 is to conduct a feasibility study to return the golf course to its natural habitat. This would address returning the area to the natural repairing habitat and providing connection to the Stevens Creek Trail. Aligning with the goals outlined in the general plan as specified in Chapters 6 and 9, returning the golf course to natural habitat supports protecting the city's urban and rural ecosystems. It specifically calls out preserving and enhancing natural vegetation, landscape features, and open space with expressed emphasis on limiting recreation in natural areas to activities compatible and appropriate with preserving natural vegetation, such as hiking and biking. The Parks and Recreation System Master Plan provides guidance when the city embarks on a program of strategic reinvestment or considers renovation and expansion of major facilities. The master plan also calls for the completion of the Stevens Creek Corridor Master Plan, including the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. This plan should be guided by the vision and goals of the master plan, emphasizing conservation and the unique ecological value of the site. The Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the three options at their June 3 meeting and unanimously recommended to city council to update the feasibility study for Option 1 and continue with a feasibility study for Option 3. They noted that the studies would result in updated cost estimates for more accurate comparison. The Commission also encouraged that the studies include opportunities for partnerships and grants that could potentially offset costs. Based on the recommendation from the city council, the next steps would include conducting feasibility studies on a selected option or options. Once the studies are complete, public outreach would be conducted on the options selected, including a landing page on the city's website, a citywide mailer, a community survey, and a community meeting. The study and outreach results would then be brought back to the Parks and Rec Commission and city council for consideration. The resulting direction from city council could be included as a future capital improvement program project. All options would replace an old irrigation system that is inefficient and wastes water. The feasibility studies would provide more information in the way of water efficiencies and decreased costs. Option 1 and 2 were considered in 2014 and 2016 respectively, and will require updates to the studies and updated pricing and considerations. Option 3 would require a new study. The estimated cost to study each option is shown here. Currently, the golf course is subsidized by the general fund by approximately $300,000 annually. Option 1 is estimated to lower the subsidy required to $282,000 annually. Option 2 has the potential to significantly reduce or eliminate the annual subsidy required due to various improvements and includes, but estimated numbers are to be determined. Option 3 is estimated to require an ongoing annual subsidy of $200,000. This number includes an estimated revenue of $20,000 that would be generated by ranger programming. Once these studies have been completed, it is expected to cost an estimated $8,000 for outreach, including costs for a citywide mailer and community meeting. The golf course study, City Work Program item, has been allocated $50,000 for the current fiscal year. An increased allocation may be required depending on the option council chooses. The additional allocation of $26,400 reflected in the recommended action is to accommodate the Park and Recreation Commission's recommendation to pursue Options 1 and 3. So, our recommended action tonight is to direct staff to update the study for minimal repairs to the golf course, Option 1, and to study returning the golf course to natural habitat, Option 3, and to approve budget modification number 2122-148 to appropriate $26,400 for these studies. That concludes my presentation. I want to also mention that city staff Katie Nemura and Jenny Coberman are also in attendance to assist in answering any questions you may have.
Great, thanks, Director McGreeney. Are there any questions from council at this point? Before I open it up to public comment, I see Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Joanne, for the report. So, if we were to approve items, Options 1 and 3, the grand total, it's just a little confusing to me because the recommended action, Item 2, says to approve the budget modification number 2122-148 to appropriate $26,400 for these studies. But for me, it's a little bit clearer if I have the total. So, what's the grand total between those two? And then I wanted to know what was in each part. So, if we were just looking at Option 1, what's that going to cost? And then if we're looking at Option 3, what does that cost?
Right, so I believe the, so we have $50,000 already allotted for this project. And so, the addition for Option 1 for the study cost was an additional eight, I'm sorry. The cost for the update to Study 1 is $8,400. And then to do Option 3 is $60,000. And then the additional costs come in with the outreach, which is estimated, I believe, at $8,000. And there is some contingency built in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have Councilmember Willie.
Hi, thank you, Joanne. Couple of questions there. So, if I understand your fiscal impact, if it's updated and keeping it as a golf course, it would take $282,000 subsidy per year? To keep it functioning as it is now?
That's the estimate, correct.
So, the question I got, it's been quite a while since we had this on the council. So, some of this, you know, we talked about last time, but I just don't remember. So, how many acres is this golf course?
Sorry, there's a lot of numbers involved in this item, so I'm having staff help me, and it's 16.7 acres.
And how does that compare to a typical nine-horse, nine-hole gas core or golf course?
I know that we use our comparator as Sunken Gardens over in Sunnyvale, and I'm not quite sure of the acreage associated. But I think that ours is a bit smaller. We don't have a driving range or a short game practice area, really. So, I think that we might be on the smaller side. But I could be mistaken.
And it seemed to me, one of the questions when it came to us before was how to entice more use? And do you have any of that? Have you, what was the result of that? You know, if it's taking this $282,000 a subsidy per year versus being self-sufficient, so trying to upgrade it so it's, of course, not going to be a competition scale, but more enticing to both our residents and the Bay Area residents?
Sure. So, a silver lining of COVID is that we've seen definitely an increase in rounds played out at Blackberry Farm. So, I think that we had initially had a regular average of 25,000 to 28,000 rounds per year, and it was, I think, in the 40,000 range this past year. So, I think we've definitely seen an increase and an uptick for that. One of the things that I think is, you know, most notable is that golf course maintenance is just expensive. And normally, I don't think that this is an anomaly. I think that what you normally see is that unless you charge really high prices, it's difficult to be sustain, you know, sustain, being operated in the black. And I would say, you know, we do the same for our pool and for our field. So, we do, you know, take a loss at some point for other recreational opportunities that we allow the public.
So, I'm still just trying to understand where we're at with, to what extent do we feel it could be sustainable? So, you said the current, because of the pandemic, the number of rounds played went from what to what?
Let me refer to the staff report here. So, there's a table in the staff report that has the golf round comparison. And pre-COVID, it was 28,000, and rounds in COVID were 41,000. And we have compared Sunnyvale, San Jose, and then the course at Deep Cliff as well. They've all seen substantial increases during COVID.
So...
The other thing I would just mention, sorry to interrupt you. A lot of golf courses make their money on banquet facilities. And as you know, we have the Blue Pheasant, which I think is also the original construction of the 60s and, you know, needs upgrades as well. I, we have a lease with, that we do operate, that, we don't manage that as city staff. So, we do make income off of the receipts of the Blue Pheasant, though.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi, Joanne, thank you for the presentation. So, the, I think the proposal for Option 1, it's an update for 8,400. You mean the conceptual plan that's included in the, in this agenda item? And that didn't study the natural habitat? So, that's a new, we need a new study. But it did study the minimal repair, but we need some update for, from four years ago, right?
Correct, correct.
And then the estimated costs were all from 2014?
Correct.
Might have doubled even right now.
Yes.
So, even returning to natural habitat, that might be 1.5 million in 2014, so it could be 3 million today?
Correct.
So, does this study include Blue Pheasant?
The study would not include Blue Pheasant for Option 1. It would include Blue Pheasant for Option 2.
Why is that?
So, Option 1 really just addresses the deferred maintenance and the minimal repairs needed to continue to operate the golf course. So, again, just updating tee boxes, irrigation, netting, things that haven't been addressed in years, quite frankly. The preferred option 2, which is Attachment B in the packet, that is a whole renovation of the golf course. It's a redesign. It incorporates a short course game at the front of the property. It relocates the Blue Pheasant and builds a new clubhouse in a different location. So, if you're interested in pursuing that, you know, the estimates at the time, I believe, sorry, let me get back to my...
No, I think, I thought you said Option 3 would include Blue Pheasant.
No, Option 3 is natural habitat.
Oh, so Option 3 also doesn't include Blue Pheasant?
Correct.
Okay, okay, that makes, okay.
Sorry, there's a lot involved.
But then, but then just returning to natural habitat. This is 2014 estimation, so that means they didn't study, but they did give an estimation.
They gave a verbal estimation when it came to council.
And that's a little higher than minimum repair?
It is, at the time.
And what, why is that? What are they considering in returning to habitat? Are they...
That was just at a council study session, and those were the numbers that the consultant had said at the time. So, that's what we're reporting. That's the information we had to go on.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore, do you have a brief follow-up question? If it's more elaborate, let's go ahead and go to public comment.
It's pretty brief. So, I just want to point out that we did just approve a budget. And I'm curious, because Blackberry Farm Golf Course shows up in our budget in three different areas under Parks and Rec, and then two places under Public Works. And there are associated budget unit numbers with this. So, I don't see the 50,000 carryover. But my concern is that we just approved a budget, and for 2022 total expenditures, we had 679,000. And now we're considering going up over 1.1 million on top of that. So, I just want to point that out. And then, in the future, when we have these suggestions, I would like to see how these, how they tie into the budget unit numbers and where they reside, or is this something new that should be under capital improvements? If, can somebody answer that?
I don't know if Katie can possibly answer that a little bit better than I can because I think she might be a little bit more familiar with the budget than I am. However, I do believe that the $50,000 does reside in the capital improvement project budget for this item. And the reason we weren't able to ask for this funding prior is because it didn't go to commission until June 3. So, we tried to bring this item to you as quickly as possible to expedite because we know costs just keep going up.
Any other follow-up from staff on that before I head over to public comment? Okay, let's go over to members of public. Right now, we have four members in public with their hands raised. They are Juliana Pendleton, John Ennells, Jennifer Griffin, and Jill Halloran. You'll each have three minutes to speak, and you'll need to have your hand raised before the end of the first public comment is concluded. So, in order for me to recognize your hand raised. And so, now we have Peggy Griffin as well. Welcome all. So, our first speaker is Juliana Pendleton. Sorry, I'm a little rusty.
Thank you for having me. My name is Juliana Pendleton. I'm the Environmental Advocacy Assistant for the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. So, Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society is supportive of Option 3 to restore the golf course back to nature. If the city is looking to add more activation for the area and include, we ask that that is included in the feasibility study. Activities should be in a peaceful spirit that ensure the area is a place to enjoy nature. It should not be event-oriented, where those set activities would require additional parking, roads, and/or buildings. Additionally, there are many grant opportunities for restoring areas back to nature, and we hope those will be included in the study. Finally, we are not in support of any intensification of the golf course, Option 2. And yes, that is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Juliana, and thank you very much for being concise. I'll read off the remainder names, and these will be called on. John Ennells, Jennifer Griffin, Jill Halloran, Peggy Griffin, Connie Cunningham, David McElroy, Susan Moore, Rota Frye, and Lisa Warren. Welcome, John Ennells.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Ennells, I live on Florence Drive, and which is at the end of Farlap, opposite the Blue Pheasant and Blackberry Farm. To find that I have missed a June 3 meeting just annoys the heck out of me because my comments probably would have been better given at that meeting. I am, however, well-versed in the situation here and was excited in 2014, my goodness, it's been that long, when the studies of how to do and what to do in this area were put forward. And my comments have remained the same, I think, except for the first one. I was old enough to remember when the Blackberry Farm Golf Course subsidized many of the activities in the Parks and Rec Department. We actually made money on the golf course when we first had it in the 90s. So, that is definitely an option that could we return to. My preferences of the three options presented, I'll take in reverse order. Number 3, definitely do not return this to the natural state. We walk the trail most days and witness the efforts in McClellan Ranch to do this. It's just, they failed. There are areas that are just an untidy mess or dead of dying plants surrounded by weeds. It's costing the city a lot of money, and to do more of it will be unsightly and generate no revenue to offset its costs. If you look at the new parking area put in at McClellan Ranch, it was professionally landscaped with native plants and then allowed to die. It's now full of weeds. We just do not seem to be able to realize that returning things to natural is not easy. It costs money and doesn't look very good. The second option looked great to me now, and it still does. It solves the Blue Pheasant problem with a well-designed facility that meets the need of the public. I'm a golfer, but find the current state of the course not too fun to play, and there's nowhere to practice. So, the new ideas look like a lot of fun could be had. But if we can't afford 2, then we have to do Option 1. It's nice to see the uptick in rounds during COVID. This is happening nationwide, and it's been a great boon to the golf business, and we can participate. But the Blue Pheasant and other houses should be replaced, too. Perhaps we can then find space to incorporate some of the practice features in Number 2. So, I'm really enthusiastic about 2 because it gets rid of the Blue Pheasant. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin.
Okay. Hi, Darcy, can you guys hear me now?
You can hear me. Welcome.
Yeah, my tablet is, it's back to normal. Wrong cable. Anyway, yeah, thanks for having this item. I think I actually remember 2014. You know, I think that we need to remember that golf is an activity that is enjoyed by many seniors. My father-in-law used to golf all the time, and it was something that he enjoyed even into his 80s, even in ill health. And it also, golf is a social sport. My husband's brothers and stepbrothers actually take their golf clubs with them when they fly from different states. When they come out to California, they used to bring their golf clubs out to go golfing with my husband's father, the one who golfed. I'm sorry, I may have called you my stepfather. But it is, I have a friend in Florida, they golf all the time. People golf in Virginia. Also, in the tech industry, many, many discussions about tech situations are performed on golf courses. My mother lives in Aptos around the Rio Del Mar Golf Course. It is used extensively. We are always amazed at how many people are out there. Yes, I think COVID did bring people out to try to use the resources. Mona Vista and Homestead High School regularly have golf teams. At least when I went to Mona, Homestead, and my husband went to Mona Vista, we had golf teams that would go out and use Blackberry Farm. I do think that it, yes, it is a floodplain, but I do think that trying to keep it there gives a nice presentation. And it also is something that... And it also is something that a lot more people can use as a social sport. So I'm in favor of number one, if you guys could do that. I do enjoy the Blue Pheasant. It might be able to be upgraded a little bit more. Rio Del Mar actually has a um something similar to the Blue Pheasant. It's actually a, I forgot what you call it, it's like a golf center for for the golf course. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Jill Halloran. Welcome, Jill.
Sorry, I was on mute. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um I just want to echo what Juliana said earlier. I'm a thirty-year resident, actually more than thirty-year resident of Cupertino. I often walk um at McClellan Ranch and I often walk in, you know, in the area of the golf course. I um enjoy nature. I don't think of nature as weeds. Um I think that if anyone thinks nature is weeds, they might be happier in a more urban environment, a more uh, you know, landscaped um perhaps artificially landscaped environment. Um and also I want to remind people that while golf courses have their um have their place in society and they're relaxing for people, use people, enjoy them. Um we're also um in the middle of a sustained and very severe drought. Um and they're not very sustainable. And um personally, when I walk through Blackberry Farm and McClellan Ranch area, I prefer to see nature and to know that wildlife is supported as best it can possibly be. So I support option three and option, option one to a lesser degree, but option three enthusiastically. And that's all. I I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, uh council members and staff. I want to thank the staff for providing the Activity Participation Survey for a perspective and for their physically conservative recommendation. Uh I support looking into options one and three only. I do not support putting any sports fields in an area where we have wildlife area along Stevens Creek Corridor. It does not fit with the McClellan Ranch, Stevens Creek Trail, Orchards, Open Space theme, which is the minimal use plan. So one and three are my preferences. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our next speaker is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, um Mayor Paul and council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Um my name is Connie Cunningham. I am a longtime Cupertino resident and also belong to the Santa Clara County Audubon Society. I too often walk at McClellan Ranch. Cupertino's Blackberry Farm and McClellan Ranch are jewels in the increasingly urban environment of our county. I agree with the position of the Audubon Society letter and written communications and the other speakers in support of it for um uh the option of returning to nature. Um that's my primary um interest too. I have less interest in option one, although understand that that is certainly much better than option two because uh it those two are the more habitat friendly for wildlife. It's it's important to note that a return to nature is the least impactful to the environment. As the South Bay becomes increasingly crowded, as you know, with development, it's critical that Blackberry Farm and Stevens Creek be retained as environmental jewels in our city. It'll be a very special, special thing that our city provides to the region. Um please note that the staff has noted on page five of their report for option three, return to na- nature, any type of facility that would require lights or may produce sound louder than the sound produced by a golf course may fail to re- meet regulations that protect habitat and wildlife in the corridor. And we do have sensitive li- wildlife in that corridor. The Parks and Rec Commission recommendation is consistent with this staff position. The Parks Commission stated that the public did not support option two, the fully renovated golf course. Understanding that the recommended action tonight is to re- approve the staff recommendation, I urge you to consider changing the direction to focus on option three, returning the golf course to its natural habitat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Connie. Our next speaker is David McElroy. Welcome, David.
Okay, now I've unmuted. Thank you. I appreciate uh this opportunity to both the council and the staff. I'd like to say, great job on the last uh review of Blackberry Park. I love the way it turned out. Community came out for natural habitat. It it is a jewel, no doubt about it. Uh on option one, uh I'm curious and and I'll find out later from staff if we have plastic pipe or iron pipe in the ground. If we have plastic pipe in the ground and it isn't failing too often, just putting electronic valves in and wiring in the ground, which is relatively inexpensive compared to putting piping in the ground, uh the efficiency could be greatly improved on the watering. Uh I imagine a fifty percent reduction simply because it's now being done manually and manual irrigation just doesn't make any sense because the math is too complicated. The new equipment out there for irrigation is really stellar. And it could uh impact the water costs significantly, which is going up at two hundred percent of what energy increases have been going up over several years. So I like option one. I don't play golf, never will. But I see fathers and mothers and daughters and sons all the time and a lot of senior citizens all the time, and they're having a great time. We live on the golf course. It's beautiful. It melds in with the park beautifully. It isn't too noisy, except when they get a a hole in one, and then they get pretty noisy for a minute. Uh but I think controlling cost, looking at the water budget, that's a significant amount of money and finding ways to encourage more people to come out, especially families and seniors, would increase uh the revenue there and cut down on the subsidy. So thanks very much for having this process. Look forward to how it evolves. Thank you. I yield back.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker is Susan Moore. Welcome, Susan.
Hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay, so Susan Moore, forty-year resident, and I don't play any golf. And but I I do watch the Parks and Rec uh meetings and I really enjoy them and uh Joanne's been wonderful. And but I wanted to, what I did learn at the last meeting was that uh option one is kind of necessary to avoid any major damage. Uh from what she had said and and the staff said, um it's really potentially could leak and it this is not a a good thing to happen during the current drought. So I mean, it whether you uh do two or three or four or five, um it 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 seemed to me from watching the meeting that it's necessary to, as a stopgap measure, to do something about the irrigation system, or at least assess what's happening. Um uh and it might save a little money in the long run, so I I will advocate for that. Um as far as two and three, um I really, I mean, there's pros and cons. I'd love to have nature, it back to nature. It's also very nice to walk through there and see people playing golf. It's just sort of relaxing to watch them. I wouldn't do it, but but is it worth, you know, keeping um that all that area? I don't, I don't really know. You're gonna have to decide that. Um and outreach outreach is really important too, so. Um one comment on the restaurant, um it'd be nice to have a restaurant there, but just something, some little. But whether that would um be appropriate with to returning it to nature, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next speaker is Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
All right, baby. Hi, good evening, council members. I wanted to concur with the previous speakers, Connie Cunningham, uh Juliana Pendleton, Peggy Griffin, Dave McElroy. Um I do support the staff recommendation for items one or three. Two moves the restaurant um and impacts another group of homes, uh by the way, not mine. Um and Joanne, thank you so much for providing the history. I know there's really long history and we need to go back further to the early two thousands to look at the plans for the area. In the past, the golf course, as the first speaker mentioned, um it did make money for the city. Pools and picnics lost money. Um and I'm confused about programming within the nature habitat, bringing in twenty thousand dollars a year. Uh we don't look to squeeze money out of other parks. What programs do you all have in mind? Um this is really a lot to ask of a small area that has multiple uses. Of course, we haven't, and there's a lot of other areas within the corridor that have yet to be, I would say, built out, like Stockholm Meyer, for instance. Um now, I want to go back. We were taxed. We chose to, Blackberry Farm had been privately owned, and we voted for the PG&E tax. It was created to purchase the Blue Pheasant, the golf course, and the pool picnics, collectively known as Blackberry Farm. And the reason why it was purchased was as open space. Purchase as open space. Keep the oaks. Don't build housing. I still remember the flyers that I was getting at my home. So we need to remi- be reminding of that. Also, can you share the cost of pool picnics? We know that there's a seventy-seven percent subsidy, according to the reports, but it would be really good to see the actual dollars and cents. Going back to the original plan, it was going, they were going to retain the ponds. They were a naturalized habitat. They were important to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. I can remember the cacophony of of uh red-winged blackbirds. Unbelievable. During construction, the ponds disappeared. Another part of the, and 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 what happened? And it sounds like now there's no plan to resurrect them. Last that I heard, there was a plan to resurrect them. Another power plan was to replace the water system at a cost of two hundred fifty, about two hundred fifty thousand. And since then, we keep on coming up with all these plans and plans and plans. And I'm thinking, if we put those plans into watering, then maybe we would have been done by now. Also, I'm confused why the watering system would be the same whether the area is a golf course or returned to nature. I would think that return to nature would cost less. Lastly, about water, Public Works Director Ralph Quals said that we own the water rights. Blackberry Farm was watered with onsite water. After the renovation, we had expensive San Jose water. So that is one of the reasons why this, why we wind up spending a lot of money to maintain this place, because we no longer have onsite water. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi, thank you. Um thank you, Rhoda, for the further back information. Um I'm not a golfer. I am a hiker and walker, but I my, if I had to tell you how I felt right now, and I don't think it would change, I prefer one over three. For some reasons that other people have mentioned, we we are an age-friendly city and seniors do enjoy golf. I know that may sound like a stereotype, but it's the reality. If there are new irrigation systems, it would be more efficient and and perhaps there's companies that are coming up with things that need a place to showcase those and you can can work with getting them to give a discount to make it happen. That doesn't sound like a bad idea. Um I'm not sure what I feel about the Blue Pheasant. I haven't been there in decades other than to use the parking lot to walk. Um I, option two is definitely not something I'm a fan of for all sorts of reasons. We, the idea of going back to nature is a lovely idea, and it's done other places. We have Ranch of San Antonio. We have McClellan already. And and I have to agree with John about how some of that natural habitat at McClellan really walking from McClellan to Blackberry has suffered over the years. In fact, it looks like it has been redone a few years ago or recently. Um and there's a lot of money that went into that the first time. To have it all be overgrown by weeds and have those little colored flags all over the place forever, it didn't look very natural. So if it's not done right and it's not maintained, na- nature does need maintaining in some fashion. Also, with fire risks, if we have a whole lot of unmaintained natural habitat with no water, we have issues for the homeowners around that area. Fire insurance may not be available, yada, yada, yada. There's a lot of things to think about, but in bottom line, bottom line is, I prefer one, two is a no, and three is nice. But I think we need other options. And a golf course could be it. Thank you. And again, I am not a golfer. No interest at all.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll bring it back, and I'll just uh give the public a quick reminder. Uh with regard to the speaking, you'll need to have your hand raised before the first speaker is done in order for uh for us to call on you for public speaking. Uh and so we'll go ahead and bring this back to council. Um are there any initial comments from council or clarifying questions that we wanted to ask of staff uh following the public comment? And I'll just go by hands. Uh if there are no uh clarifying questions, I will entertain a motion. Uh and with a reminder to everyone that the default motion would be the staff recommendation, which in this case is one, to direct staff to update the study for minimal repairs to the golf course, which is option one, and to study returning the golf course to natural habitat, which is option three. Um as well as to approve a budget modification uh specifically number two-one-two-two dash one-four-eight to appropriate twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars for these studies. And so Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised. Did you want to uh move the default motion or a different motion?
Oh, I can move the default motion, yeah. I move that we uh conduct a study um for option one and three. And do we do the budget also?
Uh yes, just as I read it, so you don't have to repeat it if it's a. Okay, great. Councilmember Wei, did you want to second the motion?
Yes, I'll second that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Vice Mayor Chow, I see that your hand is still raised. Did you want to make comments at this time on the motion?
Yeah, I do have, still have some questions.
Okay.
So what will be the annual maintenance cost of for either option one or three? Um I assume that for the natural habitat, there will still need watering and maintenance. Are they going to be maintained like a park?
Correct. So those will be updated as part of the study, so those um costs will be analyzed during the study.
Okay. And then what's our percentage that we subsidize the sports center?
Um I can have staff look into that. I don't have that handy right now.
Yeah, so maybe after the meeting, could you give us dollar amount like Rhoda asked? Not just percentage of each of these major facilities that we uh provide? And um so dollar amount we fund, the dollar amount we subsidize, and the usage information like uh number of residents and percentage of residents, that that would be great. And then I I think uh when residents did wonder, what's the water usage of Memorial Park? How is that compared with uh golf course?
I don't know the water usage of Memorial Park specifically, but just as um a comparator, um the water usage out at um McClellan Ranch is seven hundred thousand um gallons, so annually. Um so it's substantially less than what the golf course uses.
How lo- how how many acres is McClellan Ranch?
Uh staff will get that to me in a moment.
And the golf course is, remind me again.
Sixteen point seven acres.
Um fifteen point seven?
Sixteen point seven.
Fifteen point seven acres. And golf course is, oh, the water usage is how much?
Between seven and eight million gallons. McClellan is sixteen point one.
Hmm, okay. And with the nature habitat of option, option, option three, would that include also some picnic areas so that on residents still have access to the nature habitat and trails for access and restaurants? And then would, what will be the maintenance cost of this minimal facilities to provide uh better access? Would that be included in the study?
Again, that would all be included in the study.
So it will also include the facility options to provide access?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next, we have council member.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So my question is, as I understand it, both um options do not include the uh study for uh for the Blue Faz and Restaurant, right?
That's correct.
You know, I am a golfer, and you know, after golf, it's really nice to. And, you know, after golf, it's really nice to have a place to sit and chat, or before, after. The Blue Pheasant restaurant really is not quite up to par, you know. So is, if we want to add a study of how can we, you know, renovate or enhance Blue Pheasant, would that be extra money, or could it be included in the study?
So, if you refer to the fiscal impact section in the staff report, it does indicate for option two, the preferred alternative that does address the Blue Pheasant, that renovation, and it wasn't renovations to the clubhouse. It was building an entirely new clubhouse down the fairway, or down on the first hole. And that was going to, just for the clubhouse, it would cost $3.6 million. So, I think if you want to study doing renovations or building a new Blue Pheasant, just remember, the Blue Pheasant, attached to the Blue Pheasant are the pro shop, the office for staff, as well as the restrooms. So, that is the first point of entry for the golf course as you come down the ramp. So, I'm sure that we could get updated information for that, but it would probably cost additional money to pursue studying that option.
Right. So, most golf courses, when you go into the pro shop, just signing, you get, you know, apparel, and nice places, you have coffee. And, you, you know, Blackberry Farm is a very nice little golf course, and it's a night hall. Deep Cliff also has a night hall. You can do the morning night hall. And so, but they have places you can either do. So, the feeling, it, it's just really different. So, if we can somehow connect the pro shop and make a little, I don't know what a renovation is possible, instead of building a new clubhouse, it would be nice to, if we kick option one, it really would be nice to upgrade it so that it's, it would attract more golfers. That's, that's my point. But I get it if it's, so if just to include in option one, a upgrade of the pro shop, would that be, how much would that cost to, for the study?
I, I really don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't factor out all the different sections of the preferred option and what the cost associated would be with doing, you know, piecemeal of that process.
Okay. So my suggesting, recommendations, it really, it would be nice to have that feature at least investigated, and, and find out what our, our options are.
Great, great. Thank you, Councilmember Way. Our next hand is from Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start with, one is for Joanne. I think in the future, you know, I'm a very visual person, and, you know, we, we talk a lot about this, but I, I think it'd be really good to show a couple slides of, of the, the space, so that when we're talking, we, we kind of remember what it is this, this entity consists of. And accordingly, we can then decide how important it is to the, to the community. And so, I didn't see any pictures in the presentation, but to me, that, that really kind of helps put things in, into perspective. Then I'll go on to a technical question, and so this one, I think, is for Director of Public Works. Rhoda said that originally it was watered by Cupertino water, and now it's by San Jose water. Is Roger able to shed some light on what, what really is going on there? And if we were able to go back to Cupertino water, how would that change the cost?
Yes, Councilmember Willie, thank you for the question. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. I, I don't recall a full history of, of the water use there. I, I do recall that back in the day, 15-plus years ago, there were wells located on the, on, on the golf course, and the city drew water from those wells. Valley water and other water regulators, over time, have really cracked down on the use of those types of wells. And so, it's not a surprise to me that they were, that we were forced to abandon the use of those wells back then, and then connect to potable water. And so, that's, that's why I would think that we're connected to that way now. And of course, that, that is driven at the cost, because we have to use potable water to use turf, there's no other available water.
Thank you. So, a, a couple comments in. Is it, you know, number one is, you know, where I start on topics like this is the, the overall community that we've got. And here we are, we're going to be adding, you know, another 282 units at the Oaks, possibly 42400 at Balco. Our arena allocation of, I think, 4500. I think we really need to be very cognizant of the park space, activity space, outdoor space, that is going to get people, you know, into, to the environment, not holed up in, in more and more buildings. So, with that being said, you know, once, once something is, is removed from our, what I would call our account of park space, I, I just don't see that it would be able to ever be put back. We increase our, our community numbers, but then we're limited by the existing amount of park space that we have. So I want to be very careful. So then, okay, we've got this golf course. Is that the right use of it? The couple things I would toss out is, we had nearly 28,000 rounds of golf going to 41,000. I think it would be very good if at, at checkout or check-in for a round of golf, it was recorded, was it Cupertino resident? Was it Sunnyvale resident? Was it San Francisco resident? Of those 21 or 40, or 28 or 41,000 rounds, how many of those are for the community here? You know, to me, that's a very important piece of information. And all of a sudden, you take that out, those 41,000 rounds of golf are going to be people, if they're from this locale, they're going to be driving elsewhere. Oh, there, there we go. We're moving away from what we're trying to do, keep people close by. So the next thing I would toss out, you know, this climate, the importance of climate, if, you know, to kind of look at, that if people carpool, I mean, who plays golf by themselves? You know, it's twosomes, threesomes, foursomes. And by offering, you know, a discount, you know, $2 off, $3 off, maybe even more, if they carpool. So if you have a foursome, and they all come in the same car, they might be able to save, you know, $10 between them. And so, those are the types of ideas that I think we should really study at this time, while we're looking at how to improve this, this entity, and increasing the draw so that our community is able to take care of another, another escape from, from being holed up in, in these tough times. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Joanne and staff, for, for all the work that you guys are doing. And, and when we come back, I, I hope we have, you know, some more to go on. Thank you.
So I, I did want to just mention that we do track resident versus non-resident. So it's specifically for Cupertino residents. We don't track what other cities or communities people are coming from specifically. And I believe that the number of rounds, the five-year average is about 10,000 rounds, or resident rounds.
Yeah, I, I would still suggest, you know, you, you just have this little card right there, or the, the person who takes the, schedules the, the, the round, you know, are you, you know, what city are you from? Cupertino, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, San Francisco? And just write it down. That valuable information, i- i- it's there for the taking, if we take it, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay. So, there were a couple of other comments that I was concerned about, and that was the maintenance of the creek area. Because when I look in our budget book, under maintenance, I see several hundred thousand dollars allocated to Blackberry Farm. You've got ground maintenance at 339,000, and then you've got, I'm not really sure what they mean by this, but facilities and fleet at 542,000. And then there's a separate parks and rec, Blackberry Farm Golf Course expenditures of $679,000. So I'm hoping somewhere in there, perhaps, there is something that can be allocated towards the maintenance of the creek, because there's this talk about debris there, and that it needs to be cleaned up. Also, with regards to the parking area by the pools, there does need to be some remediation there, and it has kind of, it's, several years have passed. It's not looking very good, and it does need to be, to be worked on. Hopefully, there's something in the budget for that. My concern with wanting to return to natural state is, is more of a citywide concern. We have multiple areas that have green turf, heavily irrigated areas that we could be converting over to California native plants, which would have lower water usage, and that we can be much more water-wise across the entire city. And I, I would kind of like to see an, an inventory of this space. So for instance, I think we can all visualize the Quinlan and the type of landscape around that. That whole area could be converted to something which is much more efficient and better for our pollinator pathways, which we're trying to develop. And so, I'd, I'd like to see, see an inventory of spaces in the city that we can be converting, if that's truly our objective, that we're not simply looking at this one area. And, you know, I did take up golfing 30 years ago. It's not my, my favorite sport. I find it super frustrating, but when, that's, the, the comment that it's simply seniors is not true. When I was golfing, it was down at Los Alamitos Naval Station, and that's where Tiger Woods had learned to golf, and he was in his teens at the time. So it's not simply a senior sport, and I would want to see young people really encouraged to do that. So I, I am in support of one and three. However, I, I am interested in seeing the Blue Pheasant fixed up in some way. And I agree with Councilmember Way that it's nice to have a cafe at the golf course when you're done, and you have time to sit and talk about all those great, great pools you did, but, or maybe not. So, anyway, I think that that's worth it, but I don't know how to incorporate that study into this request without it going into the complete teardown, which I don't agree with. But if there's some way that we can add that in, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. So, I'll go, and hopefully, we can have some brief wrap-up comments for any hands that are still raised. I agree with the idea of having drought tolerant and native vegetation there. That'll definitely help with the water issue. And as we all know, that, that's very important to be looking at and conserving, and also just on, on, an ongoing basis, ecologically more responsible. And we're much more cognizant of that these days, of course. So, with regard to water rights, I would like, when you come back after we give our direction, to get a fuller report with regard to that, because I've heard a, a lot of indicators over the years that we do have underground water rights there. Why are we going and purchasing these, you know, many gallons of, of water each year? So, so I would just like to get much better studied and accurate and comprehensive clarity on that. With regard to the fact that we do have a number of facilities there, not just the golf course, not just the pro shop, we also have a restaurant, as well as very nearby, an historic house. I think that it would be a good idea to look at going ahead and letting us know what a prospective roadmap would look like. I, I think that it makes a lot of sense to focus upon the irrigation system right now. This is something that we've been looking at ever since I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and that was last in 2014, but I started in 2007. And so, it's something that, if you look at the cost of water over time, yeah, we probably could have paid for quite a bit in those savings had we done something at the beginning. I think we got, you know, a bit, a bit starry-eyed with regard to what we could do. It looks pretty clear that we need to take this piecemeal approach as, as Director McGreevy was describing as, and, you know, start with these particular items that are high priority. So, yeah, I, I would definitely support item one and item three. It sounds like those are the two items that, if you go out to our community, are the ones that actually have some vocalized support, as opposed to kind of an internal kind of look. You know, I do agree that utility of space, you know, makes a lot of sense. But a lot of the times, the view from the residents is not necessarily completely in lockstep with what someone, you know, kind of working for the city would see and go, well, you know, a lot of field use, a lot of, you know, event space, that would make a lot of sense. I, I think over the years, it's become clear through the many discussions we've had over this, that this basically boils down to two things. We're looking at, you know, the existing golf course, and so let's do what we can in order to fix our costs there, as well as figure out the water rights and the water-related issues, as well as, you know, try to figure out what makes sense with regard to a, a possible alternative, and that, I think, tends to be more naturalistic. So, I like the motion on the table with some extra direction to staff to go back and look at a plan for facilities long-term, as well as things related to ecological conscientiousness, particularly the vegetation and the water rights. Those are my comments. Councilmember Way, I see that you and Vice Mayor Chow still have your hands up. Did you, and, and I would ask for brief comments now. We're on a time check at 6:36, and so just keep cognizant of that. Our regular meeting begins in about, less than 10 minutes. So, Councilmember Way.
Okay, very brief. I really like to add Councilmember Willie's comment. It looks like from the report, it says right now that Blackberry Farm's residence rates about 39%, and the pools area, picnic area is about 49%. You know, with this, if we choose option one, I think we could really raise our residents' play rates, because, you know, it would be a great addition to it. And I, I really would like to, you know, like Councilmember Moore says, somehow if we can add a study, renovate, not, not redo the whole Blue Pheasant, but renovate and make it a little bit more attractive, I think it would be really great. And as to the map, I love it, John, because we should see the whole thing. And it is in the report that I think there's a nice map. It really gave me a big overview of everything, all the way from Blackberry Farm to the Blackberry Farm golf area. So it's a whole area map, and it'll be nice to show it next time. Yeah, thank you. That's it.
Okay, great. Before I go to Vice Mayor Chow, let me interject a question. So the staff hasn't, have an anticipation of what our next touchpoint will be? If we go ahead and approve the current motion on the table with some direction, how long a turnaround would we expect before this comes back to us?
Sure. So, we're anticipating engaging the required consultants to do the work, and that will probably take anywhere from three to six months to get them under contract and make sure they have the right guidance as to what to study. And then we would, again, next steps, we would like to go to the community and get their feedback before we provide an update to the Park and Rec Commission, and finally, bringing it back to the City Council.
So are we talking about a year from now, or?
I mean, I hate to say that, but I don't like to overpromise and underdeliver, so I think that that's a safe bet.
Okay. Well, it's a fair answer. So, we'll go on to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, and, and again, with, you know, brief follow-up comments, if you have them. You'll need to unmute, Vice Mayor.
So, I also would like to include the pro shop in the study, and, and if we can include the Blue Pheasant, that would be great. I think something has to be done with that place. It's such a nice facility, but none of us go there, that, that's, so, even if it's not with this plan, it has to be something that we study. So, but with this plan, I wonder, can we at least include the pro shop in the study? Can we add that into the motion?
So, if, if I could just interject, I know that they have studied that previously, of the whole new build. So we can certainly go to NGF and ask if they can incorporate it into the study for the golf course, minimal repairs, and see what the additional costs might be, and come back to you if we need additional funding. And if we don't, we can just proceed. And again, these are estimates for the new study and the update, but could be less.
And since we are doing the outreach anyway, which, why don't we just ask everyone about what to do with the pro shop and the Blue Pheasant, right? So we don't have to do the outreach again next time. So it's nicer to just do the outreach together. So it's nicer to just do the outreach together.
Well, would you require a greater budget for that, however?
Yeah, so we may need another budget amendment, I guess. So do we approve this one today? And then now we have direction to come back with cost, additional cost, possible budget amendment for to include the pro shop and Blue Pheasant, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest that we get some kind of indicator coming back with regard to a roadmap going forward. So perhaps we're not looking at this again in a year. Perhaps it's a matter of checking in with us along the way with regard to, you know, you've gone back and taken a quick look along with the consultants as to what's feasible for the pro shop, as well as Blue Pheasant or the restaurant, let's call it, since Blue Pheasant's a tenant. And, you know, I would even say, you know, Stockhamir, since it's right there across the creek in that general vicinity and the same, you know, general land owned by the city. So how about we do that? We plan on about a half-year check-in because you do have the ability to go back and talk to the consultant that you retain and have that initial conversation. And then we could take a look at that point, say about near the beginning of the calendar year, as to what makes sense.
So just for clarification, so proceeding with pursuing options one and three as they are, and then getting further cost estimate about the renovations or the other properties associated?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, a roadmap and potentially being able to reach out to the community with regard to their perspectives on these other facilities, pro shop, restaurant, as well as, you know, I would suggest Stockhamir. I think we might be looking at it, looking at Stockhamir a little bit earlier than six months, certainly, because we've empowered a subcommittee to, you know, start talking about that in one respect. So we'll probably visit the top earlier than early calendar year.
Actually, I would prefer to separate the pro shop from the rest of the very complicated issue because I think pro shop is an important part of option one. If we want to repair the golf course to be viable, that attract more people to use it, then updating the pro shop is an essential part of that. And I would not want to lumber with the other even bigger project. So can, I suggest that today we say we approve this option including a study of pro shop renovation.
So I hate to interject.
Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in, oops, sorry, Joanne. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've gotten pretty clear direction from the council in terms of one and three, with some possible additions. If we add anything else, there's a chance we may have to come back for a budget amendment anyway. And that's where we could bring those incremental planning cost increases back to you. If we're able to do the additional study within the budget appropriation, we'll notify the council and let you know the direction. But given the current consulting market, I suspect we may need to come back for a further budget amendment, which would take council action. And we can give you discretion well in advance of the six months, Mayor, that you outlined for that.
That sounds like a fair point, and it's not insignificant to add a facility there as well at this time. So if you can commit to that, great. I'm going to go ahead and ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote on the motion on the table. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, well, great. We are actually at the very end of our time for the special meeting. And so I think we will just wait and segue into the regular meeting, although I promised to call a relatively early break in the regular meeting. So we're at 6:45. Welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Today is July 20, 2021. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here.
Great, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And right now, we have ceremonial matters and presentations. Today, we're very pleased to be able to provide two proclamations. The first proclamation is recognizing Parks and Recreation Month. That's July 2021. Well, Parks and Recreation Month happens every year in July. And as I'm sure everybody in the city knows, a lot of our quality of life, our health, our ability to interconnect socially with other people is premised upon our Parks and Recreation offerings. I see that the proclamation that we have brought forth today is on the screen now that we provide every year on an annual basis to our Parks and Recreation Department. And we are blessed with great personnel in the department as well, led by an excellent director of our department there. And Joanne McGreevy, do you want to say any words with regard to Parks and Recreation Month?
I just want to say thank you for the recognition. I know this has been a truly difficult year. Our mission is to provide a healthy, positive, connected community. And I think that the staff were able to pivot this year during COVID and do just that. So thank you for the recognition. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. And I just want to, you know, let everyone know that this wasn't an exercise in self-aggrandization at all. I had to actually affirmatively ask the department and our city manager and Director McGreevy, hey, we have Parks and Recreation Month. Let's go ahead and have a proclamation. This is extremely important to our council and community. And we thank you for your commitment and involvement and the outreach over the course of, you know, multiple times during the pandemic to make people feel like they were still connected, right? I mean, you still had Halloween activities. You had Cupertino Cares packages. And those were neither unnoticed nor unappreciated. So thank you very much for that. All right, so we are on to item number two, which is our second proclamation. And this is a proclamation acknowledging a donation of land from the Lowenthal family, Richard and Ellen Lowenthal. Richard is a former council member and mayor in Cupertino and has certainly stayed involved. And with the donation of this parcel of land has enabled our connector from the Blackberry Farm and McCallum Ranch area over to Linda Vista Park. And so we are deeply grateful for this continued involvement and certainly the donation of land. Richard, I see that you're with your camera on. Would you like to say a few words with regard to the proclamation?
For sure. Thank you very much. Ellen and I are deeply thankful to you, Mr. Mayor and the council members for this proclamation. We're thrilled to be able to do this and even more thrilled to see people using this trail every day. You know, we just wanted an opportunity to do something for our community, and we're glad that it came up. I want to offer special thanks to the Public Works Department, and especially Chad Mosley, who did the work with the neighbors, who made sure that the neighbors were happy and the trail was safe and met our desires as well. So Chad did a fantastic job and is wonderful to work with. I want to thank the Friends of Stevie Creek Trail for their support, and especially you, the Mr. Mayor and the City Council, for obviously the financial support and the project support to get this done and open it up to the public. So we're very pleased to be able to do something for our community. And it still wouldn't be possible without the help of you, Mr. Mayor, and the City Council. So thanks. Go to you.
No, well, thank you. And of course, please send your regards to Ellen as well. And I remember our conversation that we had very early on when you were thinking about the donation. And it was really a matter of, you know, you see people with land interests. And I guess in my kind of rather not particularly subtle fashion, I asked, well, is there some kind of string attached? And we had a conversation about it. And then at the end of the conversation, you simply said, no. You know, I really just want to see a connector, and it's nice open space. And it's great to see, you know, a couple of years later, this materialized. So thank you very much for your continued effort. And it was great to hear your experiences with regard to various, you know, groups in the community and our staff. That really does help give us a sense of, you know, where to place our focus and how to, you know, arrange our interactions going forward. So thanks very much again.
Thanks. I think we did something really, really good together. Appreciate it.
All right. So with that, I will go ahead and take postponements and orders of the day. And as promised, I'll take a break, a five-minute break after that. What I would like to ask the...
Mayor, sorry, there were some hands raised. I'm not sure if they were raised.
Oh, with regard to this particular?
Yes.
I think they're probably raised for oral communications because we're not taking typically proclamation of a commentary on these items here. So although I will go ahead and say, if you have any comments with regard to the proclamations, feel free to make them during oral communications. Under postponements and orders of the day, I would like to ask that we take item number 24. And item number 24 is essentially, and is it item 24? Is that right?
Yes.
I believe item 20, yes. Item 24 has to do with a personnel issue. We have a new city attorney that we have hired, and the original start date was July 27. Welcome, Chris. He has turned his camera on, so you might be able to see him in your YouTube or city channel views or in Zoom. And I learned last week that our current city attorney was going on vacation this week. And so I really wanted to be able to provide an opportunity to have that kind of continuity, reached out to Chris. And he said that he would be available for this evening. So thank you very much for cutting into your vacation schedule, Chris, to be willing to sit in on and serve our community a week early as city attorney. And so this item number 24 is to try to enable that. And that's the reason I am asking for us to bring that forward directly after this postponements and orders of the day arrangement. And so I'd like to go ahead and move that request. And can I have a second, please? Councilmember Moore, I see your hand is raised.
Second.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any discussion or any other kinds of rearrangements of the schedule for the rest of our meeting desired at this time? So I see head shakes. All right, so I'll go ahead and ask our city clerk to conduct the roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. And so, Chris, welcome as city attorney. We'll be, and thank you, Seth, for holding down the fort up to this point in the meeting. We will go ahead and take a five-minute break. It reads 6:53 on my clock right now. Let's just go ahead and reconvene right at 7 o'clock on the hour. So thanks very much, and we'll see you in a few minutes.